It's quite a stack of paper you got there. Scan over here.
We all have it. On our computers.
This is what they mean when they say got reamed.
Good, okay. Thank you. Good evening everybody, not COVID. And welcome, I'm gonna be coughing tonight, I can't help it. But welcome to the town board work session of Tuesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can I have a motion to open the work session?
I moved open the work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you. So we are gonna start off with a discussion about the creation of the Open Space Reserve Fund, which we discussed a few weeks ago, I think. Which you can explain, but really be allowing us to set aside some money so that eventually if the town had open space that we wanted to purchase, we would have the funds to do so. So you wanna give us a little summary, Ed?
Right, you're right, the board did discuss this a number of weeks ago and the purpose of the legislation, which we'll get to in a moment, is to create a reserve fund. So under the general municipal law, municipalities are able to set aside various types of reserve funds for specific purposes. So the exercise for us was choosing among these different types of reserve funds which would be the best fit for what the board wants to accomplish. For the legislation, we settled on six C, which is literally a capital reserve fund and can be used for purchasing land or acquiring interests in land. And then with the legislation, the board can craft more specifically what that means and what the purposes would be behind acquiring those interests or acquiring property. We did not, we looked at but ultimately did not choose six H and that's a reserve fund that's dedicated to paying bonded indebtedness. Thinking there was that this is just, the town would just be starting to reserve monies and that the six C fund would provide the most flexibility in terms of how this progresses over the next x number of years. It will take some time, obviously, to acquire any meaningful amount of money in this fund. So then just turning right to the legislation, there are legislative findings that we've drafted in section ninety-one-two that reflect the board's desire to use, as I understand it, monies from this reserve fund for acquiring open space. And an open space can mean different things. Open space doesn't necessarily mean the pristine forest land that hasn't been, you know, touched. It could be a community garden. It really depends on the environment. But the purpose is to create and preserve space, open space, for some purpose. We mentioned general municipal law two forty-seven. That's a state statute that talks about, unpackages a little bit more what this public purpose is all about in terms of whether it's scenic vistas or conservation purposes or even just passive recreation. In the legislative findings, we actually mentioned passive recreation because I understand that that is another purpose that the board has in mind with respect to the potential use of these funds. So the section that follows is somewhat mechanical in the sense that, you know, section ninety-one-three A talks about just creating the fund. There has to be a place where these monies will go. The scope of the fund in section B, again, acquiring the land, improving, maintaining the land for passive recreation and conservation purposes. And if the board has changes that wants to make, we can mark this up tonight. Ultimately, what you're working toward is setting this down for a public hearing. And there is a resolution in the packet tonight to do that. Dates out in end of November. Deposits, that's discussed in section C. Now, the idea there is that by June thirtieth of every calendar year, the books have essentially been closed and reconciled for the prior fiscal calendar year. And at that point, the town comptroller would be in a position to make a and the board would be in a position to assess whether there are surplus monies that might be earmarked for this particular fund. And so that in C, it reflects that that process would take place. There'd be a report from the comptroller as to the availability of monies the board would make, would determine if, and if the answer is yes, how much money to set aside. So not prescribing any particular outcome, only that this would be an ongoing consideration every year, not later than June thirtieth. So additional deposits, I think it's important to just mention that. So if there were a resident that thought that he, she, or it could be a corporation, wanted to make a donation to the town, we now would have a dedicated account and legislation around what those monies could be used for. If that, if those purposes aligned with a donor's desire to see their money put to that use, it would be an ideal place to put it and it would be more than welcome. The rest of the legislation is pretty pro forma. If there are any questions, I can try to answer them.
I just had one question. I just wanted to make sure it didn't conflict because last time we were saying, well, what exactly do we want the funds to be able to purchase? So for purpose here, we have purchased some real property for the purpose of preserving, protecting and creating and maintaining new passive park and recreational spaces, which I know we talked about. But then in the scope of funds, it just says recreation, for passive recreation and conservation purposes. So I just wanna make sure those don't conflict with each other.
Passive?
Recreation can sometimes mean something isn't necessarily passive.
So is the thought that passive should be in both places or?
Well, I wanted to ask the board, or removed.
Or removed.
Like if we wanted to purchase a place and put in a soccer field, would we be able to do that?
Right.
Potentially, yes, but that's obviously not a passive use, so.
Right.
Yeah, the purpose is passive park and recreation. It's sort of, in that case, it's passive park and recreation and then here it's passive recreation and conservation. So I personally think it should be for conservation, passive park and/or recreation. To me, that would kind of cover.
That seems right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Three potentially used.
The idea is not to put a soccer field by cutting down trees to put the soccer field. To preserve that area, but if there's a place where we can put a soccer field, for example.
Sure, right.
Then we would do that. So yes, I think that's a right description.
It was a lighted property next to another field and it made sense to add a field there, we'd wanna be able to do.
And also, you know, park to me is different from potentially leaving a property pristine and untouched, right? So passive park to me wouldn't mean acquiring ten acres and leaving it as just basically woods, forest. So I think we should put all three potential categories.
And we do have improving in that same paragraph. So if it's a passive, even a passive park, you still need to get there and mark your car and walk in, so.
Right.
I had a couple of other just points. So I guess one thought would be, we've got this kind of discretion, right? Every year comptroller will report on the availability of funds. I guess where they're deposited, is that ring fenced? Is the idea under general municipal law that that becomes like a trust? Or is it like social security where, hey, you know, we're right at the tax cap, we need some funds, there's a million bucks in this, in this open space fund, let's just pull it out because it's fungible?
That's the format, they're lockbox, you can't use it for any other purpose, right?
And then I guess that the second thing would be just from a practical standpoint, you know, the town board has the ability at sole discretion. So theoretically, the town board in the future would say, okay, you've got an endowment now that's accumulated over time. Hopefully, you know, Rob under ninety-one-four has invested the money well and it's accumulated. Theoretically, the board would then say, okay, let's establish some priorities, let's confer with conservation board, maybe recognition and sort of decide what makes sense. I guess that the final point would be just in terms of the method of deployment, this is completely open, right? So obviously, it's fully discretionary for any future board. Once that money is established, it's ring fenced, a lockbox, future boards can kind of make those determinations on an annual basis.
That's right. At some point in the future, when there actually is some money on deposit, that board at that time may wanna consider creating an advisory committee. Some municipalities have them to do that.
Like a foundation would have an actual grant making piece, right? We could theoretically have an advisory committee to advise on the use of the open space.
Sure.
Okay.
And what to purchase.
Yep, great. Thanks.
But there's no reason, that definitely doesn't need to be in the legislation, that would be later on.
I think much later on.
Yeah.
Rob would tell you, much later on. Yeah, there's not really anything to do for the short term, at least.
Rob, we expect top decile returns from this endowment, just to be clear.
So there's significant restrictions on where you can invest public funds.
That's the catch.
Very, very safe.
No crypto?
Investments, nothing like that. Very safe, which doesn't pay particularly large returns, but you don't lose the principal, so.
So I have a question. Ed, you had mentioned to us in a different context, another form of capital reserve or some other, I don't know if it's a capital reserve, but it's a six S reserve, which has an expanded scope and purpose. And the problem with that is that it's subject to a transfer tax. But there were other categories of preservation that you had mentioned could be added to this. So I just wanted to clarify that and see whether we could expand the scope of this to make it more flexible. So for instance, include preservation of wildlife and include preserves in parks? Does the term parks include preserves such as the glacier preserve, the burden preserve? I'm not quite sure what those definitions encompass.
Right, well, the six S fund in some ways aligns very well with the conservation purposes that would be behind this reserve fund that the town board would establish through this legislation. And as you mentioned, the sort of the wrinkle with six S is that it requires that a portion of real estate transfer taxes be allocated to funding the six S fund. And I understood we wanted to stay away from creating new tax burdens, even though we could. But the purposes that are in six S, essentially unpacks this idea of conservation. So I'll just, I'll read it quickly, if that's okay. Establishment of parks, nature preserves or recreation areas, preservation of open space, preservation of lands of exceptional scenic value, preservation of wetlands, preservation of aquifer recharge areas, establishment of wildlife refuges for the purpose of maintaining native animal species diversity, including the protection of habitat, et cetera, preservation of unique or threatened ecological areas, preservation of rivers and river areas. It goes on a little bit more.
Right, it goes on to beyond perhaps what would be even relevant here because I don't know that we would be preserving rivers, but.
Or coastlines, that's in here. But there is content in here that, like I said, elaborate on the idea of conservation. We could refer to it in the legislation, including but not limited to.
Right, so for instance, we could put, under legislative findings, to preserve, protect and conserve its natural resources in environmentally sensitive areas, to expand and enhance the town's parklands and recreational spaces, we could put parklands, preserves and recreational spaces.
We could build that out, sure.
I mean, more we, I mean, I think certainly.
Unless it's included.
More is better, but I think when we said at the beginning, like expanding on passive park and recreation, to talk about conservation, to me, that's sort of the breadth of that.
It encompasses all of it.
That's what I was asking, whether the term parklands.
All three and make it sort of an and/or, future boards would have all that discretion.
I think with legislative findings, that's sort of an intent and I think you always wanna be inclusive in your intent and flexible within the scope of what your goals are.
To, to be honest, in drafting this, an earlier version had borrowed a lot of that content 'cause it was good content and it had parked it in here. But when we stepped back and looked at it, it started to look lopsided. So we dialed it back.
I think park, conservation and recreation can work.
Yeah, conservation would.
All three we've covered the bases.
As long as, but we should add the word conservation to purpose.
Yeah, I mean, you've got it in the legislative findings. Now, I just think it's harmonizing purpose, legislative findings and scope. As long as those are harmonized to include all three broad categories, I think we've covered the bases.
Yep.
Alright, so we can make these edits and like I said, there's a resolution to set this down before.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, great. So next, do you wanna discuss the right guest house? Ed, I'm gonna leave that one to you.
Okay, well, just by way of update, as the board is aware, the applicant submitted some new information under a letter dated October twelfth. There is some new information about the foundation of the guest house and also some elaboration about its unsuitability for adaptive reuse and the difficulty that a future homeowners association may have just maintaining it and especially given what's going to be a very limited use. Remember, the second floor of the building is gonna be mothballed and essentially used for storage. And even the main floor of the building is not gonna be, there'll be meeting room space, but not much else. So that new information is submitted with this letter, it's in the packet. The board has discussed this, I believe, on three occasions and now has all of the information that we were expecting from the applicant. So really, we're at a point where I think the board has to decide whether this goes forward to the next step, which would be a public hearing. There is a draft resolution, it wasn't in the packet, but you have it on your email if the board is inclined to do that. And the applicants here, the applicant could answer any questions the board may have.
Um, did you wanna speak at all?
No, I think.
Yeah, just come to the microphone.
Yeah, so Diana Cola from Del Bello Donellen and we have on the line Dave Walsh. I'm not sure Felix was gonna be on tonight. I think we've stated, oh, he's here, okay. I think we've stated pretty, you know, a lot of detail what the reasons are for why we are requesting this modification to make the change. So, you know, any comments from the board would like to hear, but ultimately, we would like to move forward with that request, so.
Anyone from the board who have any questions?
So is this something we would put to a public hearing? Yes, okay.
Yep, so this procedurally, the next step would be setting it down for a public hearing. In the interim, the planning department would circulate a notice to, for the town board to reestablish itself as lead agency. Because ultimately, what you need to do, if this goes forward, is make a determination for purposes of SECR that this modification would not have a significant adverse environmental impact. Now, prior SECR determinations reached that conclusion by reasoning that the adaptive reuse of the building wouldn't affect really a material change in terms of its outward appearance. The applicant's trying to persuade you that, given all of the limitations of the building, given the questionable, frankly, they use the word unsafe condition of the foundation, the readaptive reuse closer inspection is really not feasible. And the environmental impact question can be answered by building a new structure that replicates the old one. So it will look like the existing building, but will function like a modern one.
Alright, so I would propose that we do set a public hearing for this. Certainly, no decisions being made and we wanna hear from the public on that. Also, at the same time, I don't know, Tom, you're sitting here, I don't know if it would be you or Bob, just to look at the memo about the foundation and the issues, structural issues with that and, you know, let us know your thoughts as well. Okay, alright, any other questions, comments? Anyone online wanna say anything? Felix, you are on mute.
Perfect.
Yes, we agree.
Should have, you guys should have done that quite a long time ago. Just, well, first of all, good evening, thank you. Just a kind of a timing sequence, we, obviously, there's a structure going on out there and as anyone has been in our office, moving very quickly, as it pulls part of this conversation. The putting it down for a public hearing, which we're grateful to have, is there a date in mind? And what would be, assuming there's receptivity at the public hearing, what would be the process that are at, I'm just trying to get a scheduling sequence to anticipate here.
The date we're suggesting is November twenty-ninth. That'll allow the thirty day period for circulation of the notice to reestablish lead agency status. If the public hearing closes and the board resolves to amend the finding statement, this would be the seventh amendment to the two thousand thirteen finding statement. If we get that far, the next step would be a trip to the planning board for a site plan review, which should be relatively easy since we're not really talking about significant changes here in terms of the footprint or any changes.
Right, so we're building a replica exactly where it is. Um, but we need, just, I don't know if you, if you heard, there's a require, a legal requirement that we need at least thirty days notice to notice all relevant parties. So that's how we got to that.
And can you just hypothesize, assuming we set activity, once we make a stop at all those various places, I think you have the last stop just to get through the pointy word and get approval from them, so. Or what's a reasonable date or some sort of a decision and an outside behavior decision? I've got modified agreements with Toll Brothers, et cetera. I think I've got construction questions that they've been asking me.
Yeah, I hate to do this, Felix, but I'm gonna flip the question on you and maybe you could get back to us with your hard dates and we'll try to accommodate you as best we can. But I'm not gonna get into forecasting where we might be in the future.
Well, is this something you think we can complete door to door by the end of the year? So we're gonna have our annual participatory, but I'm not comfortable with.
If you mean, if you mean all the way through planning board review, then no, that's not gonna happen.
Alright, well.
I mean, I think.
I mean, there's always a potential, but we, you know, I wouldn't I wouldn't hang your hat on it.
You know, it really ought to be sequenced the way I'm describing. You know, in another matter, we might try to, you know, dual track, but there really needs to be a SECR finding first. And until that's done and it's done in favor of allowing this modification, there's really no, nothing for the planning board to do.
Okay, well, we're not gonna quarrel with your own business, we're gonna ease them forward. So I guess we'll, or someone used to sometimes how long things take. So to do others consistency.
Alright. Anything else? Alright, well, thank you all and this, it'll be on the, in the resolutions for tonight. Alright, moving on, Rob, do you wanna talk to us about administrative items?
Sure, quite a few administrative items tonight. We have first the payment of claims. We have both the adoption of minutes and monthly reports. We have an authorization to accept the price increase and contract extension for the water chemicals bid item number two, it's caustic soda. Unfortunately, that was one of the chemicals, they would not give us an annual price, it was every six months. We have an authorization to purchase water maintenance materials, water hydrants. Those are gonna go for the new capital project that we established a couple of weeks back to replace some water mains. We're ordering these hydrants, even though that project's about a year out. Unfortunately, the hydrants are also about a year out at this point, so we're gonna order them now. Authorization to obtain bids for the purchase of DPW uniforms. Authorization to enter into an agreement with the Software House International Corporation. That is the maintenance contract for our vehicle tracking software. We have an authorization to accept vehicle auction results. We sold two vehicles this time, a two thousand fifteen Ford Taurus and a two thousand ten Ford Fusion. We have an authorization to utilize shared services of the Chapagwa Central School District Roof Repair Bid. That's gonna be to repair some of the leaking spots on the town hall roof. Let's see, we have a banner request for the Newcastle Historical Society. Authorization to release a cash bond agreement with King Fisher Philanthropies. We have an authorization to purchase an F three fifty pickup truck for parks and recreation.
And that's in the budget, correct?
So that's not in the budget. We are electing to purchase that this year rather than push that off to next year. We also have about a year's lead time on this vehicle and the window actually opened yesterday. We have about a two week window to purchase and if we don't do that, the window closes and we don't know when it opens back up again. So this vehicle's about fifty-seven thousand dollars. We identified there were some parks and rec programs that were extremely successful this year, the cosponsored programs. And we have actually a little over fifty-seven thousand. We have more than that in surplus for that. So we've identified that and we're gonna elect to, with the board's approval, purchase the vehicle this year then try to put it in that budget. That fifty-seven thousand's a little more than that forty-six thousand we had remaining under the tax cap. So we felt like we could put it in this year instead of next year. We have a resolution to approve the land swap with Augusta. We have the authorization to award the bid for the downtown holiday lights. I think we've expanded that a little bit this year. It's about twenty-three thousand dollars, but we've added some areas that had not been included in the past. And let's see, we've got an authorization to release the cash bond for laminate and also the acceptance of, should be a maintenance bond, is that correct? It says cash bond here, but I think it's a maintenance bond.
Well, there are cash performance bonds that are being allowed to retire and there are two maintenance bonds that are going to be created or approved, I should say, by the resolutions tonight. So essentially, two resolutions. And I actually wanted to flag this for the board because it was a late addition, but they now appear at page three seventy-two of the packet. So first resolution authorizes the release of cash bond agreements and then the second one authorizes the acceptance. But again, it's acceptance of maintenance bonds. And this is typical of what the board sees, not quite every meeting, but close. The amounts are a little bit higher than what is typical, but this has been reviewed by Bob Seoli and in my office and everything is here.
Okay, and I think the last item that we have is authorization to obtain bids for twenty twenty-two coach bus service for the rec department.
Alright, anyone have any questions on any of those?
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you very much. So we are going to adjourn the work session and take a five minute bathroom break. Before we do that, just a spoiler alert, cover your ears if you don't wanna know, but I'm officially announcing that the Yankees won tonight. Code text, so just putting that out there, alright.
There wasn't much delay for the spoiler alert.
Yeah, really.
Um, okay.
Well, if they do watch this, it's probably, if they do watch it next week sometime, I'll know by then.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Um alright, so um can I have a motion to adjourn the uh town work session, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break, cause I just drank this, and then uh we'll be right back.
Too much information. We're actually gonna start the town board meeting in that time.
Maybe.
No, you may have a code that's not. I do.
They played.
They did, they lost.
Thank you. Tell me when we're taping. We're up, okay, hi, everybody, welcome back. Can I have a a motion to open the town board meeting? Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh, full house today. Uh good evening, everybody, welcome back, uh we are now starting the town, public town board meeting portion of our meeting of Tuesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty two. Um alright, the first item on our agenda is a discussion about uh the appointment to fill a town board vacancy. So as you all know, uh Tara Castle's relocation from Newcastle left a vacancy on the town board. Though it was a difficult decision for her, I know that Tara was confident that the town would be in good hands. And as we fill her replacement tonight, I can assure everyone that this board will continue to provide the community with dedicated, thoughtful and respectful leadership. So town law dictates that the remaining members of the town board, those are the four of us sitting up here, have the legal authority to act upon vacancies in the position of town council member. In my view, given a slate of projects that we have to move forward, important town committees to work with, the potential for pandemic related absences, and the fact that we no longer have the authority to hold a virtual quorum for public meetings, it is essential to bring in someone to serve out Tara's term now rather than to unnecessarily operate as a four person board. With regard to process, the town board met in executive session to discuss the process for appointing a new member to fill Tara's vacancy. We reached out to potential candidates and also received applications from the public at large uh for people interested in that position. We ended up uh with a pool of five well qualified and interested uh candidates. The town board together interviewed all five of those candidates. We then deliberated in executive session as we customarily do with all of our appointments and reached a consensus as to the candidate for whom we are voting tonight. I again want to thank each and every candidate for your interest in serving our community and I urge you to continue to do so. As a result of this process, I'm pleased to announce that tonight the town board will consider the appointment of Alexander Shemtop, a resident of Newcastle since twenty sixteen, to fill Tara's town board seat. Ally lives near West Orchard and has three young children. She's a former assistant district attorney and currently is a legal mediator and works for a nonprofit company in Yonkers focusing on conflict resolution and support for clients facing housing insecurity, among other issues. She also is an active member of the PTA. With very young children and a home in the campfire section of town, Ally embodies a different demographic from any current town board member and one that deserves a voice, particularly coming out of the pandemic. If confirmed tonight, Ally will serve a one year appointment and begin her duties this evening. Her seat will then be on the ballot in November twenty twenty three, giving the entire community a full opportunity to participate in the associated vacancy election cycle. So with that being said, we do not require uh public comments for this, this is a vote that can be made just by the majority of the board here. Um that being said, because I know many of you are here tonight to speak upon this, unless you really wanted to talk about the open space law that we're gonna be discussing later, I will um allow you, rather than make everybody wait until the public portion of our meeting later, if you have something to say that has not been said, we have heard from many, many residents about filling this vacancy, both over Facebook, by email and in person. So if there's anything that you need to say that has not already been said, we are open and happy to hear anything. Just please come up to, we'll start with people in here and then if there's anyone online. So if you have anything to say, feel free to um come up and state your name. Alright.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Andrew Dorfman, I live at twenty four Hunting Ridge Road in Chapagua. This is my first time commenting in front of this town board or really any town board ever, any governmental proceeding, it's way outside my comfort zone here, but I'm honestly too outraged with the actions of this board to stay silent. Tonight's appointment of a town board member with no public comment since the belated announcement of Tara's departure departure is yet another example of this town board's commitment to put their accumulation of power over the responsible stewardship of the public trust. Tara Castle put her house on the market in June and almost certainly knew of her plans well before the listing and share them with the leadership of this board. Nevertheless, this information was kept a closely held secret for seven weeks after the early August deadline that would have allowed her replacement to be decided in the upcoming election. Instead of revealing these plans to the town in one of the weekly e-news bulletins, week after week, all summer, that space was used to sell the political message that the town was flourishing under its new leadership. This gaslighting invariably included ribbon cutting photos featuring only three out of four board members which attempted to create the impression that it was this board that deserved credit for business openings, most of which had been fully in motion before you took office. When there was no ribbon cutting to be had, we were subjected to self aggrandizing personal.
I'm sorry, excuse me one second, if you have something to speak to that's germane to this, I don't need political gran- aggrandizing and neither does this town board, so if you have anything, if you have, excuse me,
Very strict.
Do I have the floor?
If you have something germane to this discussion, we love your
This is germane to this discussion.
Public comment for, excuse me, I will kick you out of this room if you can't be civil.
Go arrest me.
So if you have, if you have anything, we're also gonna be holding public comment later for other things, so if you wanna speak about politics, then you are more than welcome to, but I was, okay.
This is germane to this, this is germane to this proceeding, may I continue?
Yes, please.
When there wasn't a ribbon cutting to be had, we were subjected to self aggrandizing personal reflections, observing how much better the town is than it had previously been, with flowery descriptions of tears of joy at the sound of children laughing on a summer's night, as if this governing body had invented childhood happiness. Week after week for three months after Tara's house was listed, right through the early August deadline for election filings, you sent out those e-news bulletins with no mention of the fact that a member of the board was already in the process of relocating out of the area. This board has been unrelentingly focused on an agenda that serves themselves politically instead of serving our community. Instead of working on projects that would enhance and improve our town like green initiatives, infrastructure, or heaven forbid democratic ideals like housing equity, you've concentrated on petty acts of electoral revenge like changing social media policies to your benefit and revising laws that have been on the books for decades which govern the placement of signs on public property, all in an attempt to legitimize grievances which you would use to divide the community and increase turnout of your supporters in the last election. In general, your term so far has been marked by covetousness of power instead of selfless service to our community and this latest move is the most blatant and divisive power grab of all. Instead of allowing myself and my neighbors to choose our town board, you've taken that power away from us. You've had the arrogance and audacity to have a recent appointee of yours vote to appoint someone new with no public review or comment, leaving our community with a town board that's forty percent unelected. Most gallingly, you've done this by keeping Tara's departure secret until her kids were already attending new schools out of state. In so doing, you've disenfranchised our entire community and betrayed our trust.
Thank you very much. Um, and before the next person speaks, I would like to uh ask you to please state facts if you know them, if you are making opinions or surmising things that you absolutely have no factual information on, I would appreciate if you would uh not state those. What you just said, Mr. Dorfman, a lot of that was completely untrue. Every town board member, first of all, was invited to any ribbon cutting, whether they chose to attend or not, I, that was their decision.
This is public comment.
In terms of when Tara knew to move, that's her information and and finances related to any move, you have no idea when any of us on the board knew, when Tara even knew she was moving.
I'm sorry, is this a debate or a public comment?
So I am speaking to you to say I would prefer you to state facts. What you are stating here is supposition and your infractions based on information that I'm unaware of. So if you could do that, I would appreciate that.
I believe that was entirely factual.
Next. Okay, thank you, next, Jane.
Think I have to put this down a little bit.
Yeah.
Um my name's Jane Silverman and I'm a resident of Newcastle and co-chair of the Newcastle Democratic Committee.
If you could just state your address, we'd do that for her.
Oh, sure, two five four Sawmill River Road in Millwood.
Thank you.
Um and I just wanna preface, I would like to read the statement that the Newcastle Democratic Committee put out last week. Um but before I do, I just wanna say this is in no way a reflection on the person and on the candidate that you would put forward. This has to do with the process and I would hate for anybody to feel that that was a personal attack on the candidate. Um.
That's appreciated.
On Tuesday, the town board is expected to announce their one year appointment to fill the vacated seat due to Tara Castle's surprising and sudden resignation. And yet just last year, Lisa Katz blocked Jeremy Slant from becoming supervisor, effectively keeping our town board operating a member short for months. Why she, why was she okay keeping a seat open a year ago, but now wants to rush her appointment through less than a month before an election? Absentee voting has begun, early voting starts in less than two weeks with election day ten days later. This appointment should be made after the election and by the new town board. Our residents should have input into who represents them, thank you, the Newcastle Democratic Committee.
Thank you, Jane.
Holly McCall, resident of Newcastle, is my address really necessary?
We generally ask for addresses.
Okay, uh one seventy South Bedford Road, um.
Hang a little mic torch.
I've never been considered tall. So again, I just, I I also wanna say that this is not any statement on the individual being considered or any of the candidates that you did consider, this is my statement about um the process. So I I am actually disappointed because this is the first regular board meeting that you've had since the announcement of Tara's resignation was had, um or her potential resignation was mentioned publicly. And I understand that appointing to fill the vacancy is your legal right, uh but I feel this process has lacked transparency. Unlike the Board of Education last year, which gave clarity as to how and when they would fill their vacancy, I haven't seen the same from you. If election results can be considered feedback, why not wait just a few weeks to hear directly from the electorate, your constituents? Rather than speak publicly about the decision making process or the timeline, it's been left to those who followed the meeting notices to know that the meeting was held in executive session to consider candidates.
That was actually my supervisor's report, just so you know.
Right, but there's a certain active following that has to be done there. Um but again, I just wanna say, I, to me, I don't feel that this was transparent and I ask if it's truly beneficial to the community to proceed with such a rush. And is it fair? Um sure, it's legal, but I'm not sure that it's right, thank you.
Thank you. Any notes?
I'm I'm just gonna speak, um.
Just can you state your name and address?
Yes, uh Suzanne Chason, twenty Ludlow Drive, Chapagua. Um I'd just like to say a couple of things, this is just anecdotal, I realize, but my next door neighbor for two and a half years put her house up for sale every six months and delisted it, put it up, delisted it, put it up, delisted it, finally moved after two and a half years. I even knocked on her door once to say, are you moving? It's like, well, we took it off the market again. So and I realize that one does not have anything to do with anybody else, but I do know from my own personal experience that putting your house up doesn't always mean a person's moving, okay, uh that's number one. Number two, I remember on our previous town board that we had vacancies that came up and they were appointed. You know, when Ivy won the the supervisor's position, her position was then appointed. When Jason left the board, it was appointed. I don't remember a ground swell of concern about that. I don't remember anybody really saying anything because it was understood that that's part of the process and that's what the board has a right. In this case in particular, I'm concerned because the vote in November was a, four people up for office, all four came in on Unite Newcastle. So there was a kind of sense that the voters really did want the Unite Newcastle slate. And it seems to me that the concern and the whole reason there was a Unite Newcastle slate is because there was a feeling that the voters were not being listened to and they weren't being given a chance to do things. So if right now, we're suddenly changing the cards and saying, well, in the past, we always vote, we always, you know, appointed someone and nobody complained, but now all of a sudden we have to change everything because somebody's upset. That doesn't seem right to me. It seems like this is how it's always been done. I don't see a problem. Nobody complained before. I don't know why there's a problem now. So those are my words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Seamus. I live at seven sixty-five King Street and I've been a Chappaqua resident for almost eighteen years. I'm not actually going to use what I wrote, but I would like to say something about what Suzanne just said. It's pretty interesting because she talked about the will of the voters and she talked about previous vacancies being appointed. And she's right. Previous vacancies were appointed and the appointee was the next highest vote getter. That was the will of the people. That was the next person who voters wanted to see hold office. And if that were the case here, then that would have been another candidate who you did interview and declined to seat, which was Dr. Lori Morton. So I kind of want to point out some inconsistency there. You can't really have it both ways. You can't say, and, and by the way, the reason, if you all recall, which I know you will, because you were on the board for the last ten years, the reason that Lauren was chosen is because some people in this room did actually complain. So there were several inaccuracies actually in that characterization. I have a lot more that I could say about transparency and ethics and how most of the, many of the people in this room feel that this process has been completely opaque, because it has, and arguably ethical, which of course, you know, I know we don't see eye-to-eye on ethics issues very often. But I think that it really should tell you all something to look out here and see this many people in a town board meeting. The reason that you were sitting up there was the Form-based code, but that is over, that is dead. We all need to move forward from here. And ideally, we'd be doing so in a spirit of communication and openness. And that's not happening because stuff like this keeps happening and infuriating people who would really like to have a voice and be heard. And I think that's really all I should say at the moment. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Roger? Hello? Roger, can you hear us?
No, you just muted yourself. Can you hear us?
Can you hear now?
Yes, we hear you.
Oh, fantastic. Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to do a couple of things. One, it seems like-
Wait, I'm sorry. Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes. Roger Fluberry, on Mill Road in Chappaqua. You know, understanding the notion of not addressing a specific person that has been appointed. But, and, and obviously, I'm unable to and, and no one, and I think most people aren't able to. But at the end of the day, that is the substance of what's happening here. People that are on the town board have the right to interview and choose a person right to be a town board member. The example of what happened previously, the appointment of Lauren, that was not based on some entitlement that, you know, just going to the next highest vote getter. Yes, it worked out well. That was the case. But obviously, whoever was on the town board had to look at the substance of the person and, and, and agree that that person was, was the right person to be on the town board because they had every right to choose other people. And in this instance, my understanding is, you know, five people were in you. Among them, the highest vote getter in the, you know, in, in the most recent election. And none of the fact of matter is that the town board has done what it's done for the past year and, and in many instances in the past, they have done their duty and their diligence and then it's come off with what they thought was the best candidate as they entitled to do. So until we know anything about the substance of the person that they've chosen, which we will, you know, which will undoubtedly know, and, and also in a year, you know, the, the members of the community will have their opportunity to, to voice their opinion regarding this newly appointed town board. So I mean, that is the process of much. So all of these other, you know, comments about, oh, you know, the timing and, and the way it was done before have nothing to do with this situation. So I'm fully supportive of how you've done things and I look forward to the town board functioning as it has in the past in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Um, anyone else? Okay, we've got someone in person.
Who, I'm sorry, I'm happy to-
You're, you're good. No one online, so.
I'm Dr. Catherine Good. I live at thirty-one Crest Road here in Chappaqua. I've been a resident for over eighteen years. I've been following a lot of this as it has unfolded. What I'd like to just really beg you to pay attention to, forget the politics of it. There are so many people in this town who feel completely disenfranchised by your process. Again, I agree that this is not about the particular candidate who you decided to elevate, but I feel like my vote is not anything you care about, that you want to know about, that you want to hear about. If there were, then you could have chosen a different path. You could have chosen to move forward with this appointment in a way that actually was responsive to all of your constituents, not just the ones who voted for you. It is not the way I think of democracy to say, oh, whoever's in the majority just gets to ram forward their agenda and everybody else, be damned, sorry my language, but that's how I think we all feel. That's how we feel that you, as a town board, have completely disrespected us and have essentially turned a blind eye to the democratic process, which is to listen to the people in town. And by listening, that includes allowing our voices to be heard through a vote. You could have let that happen and you chose not to. Holly hinted at this, that you have the legal right to do this, but there is a big difference in what you can do and what you should do. And what we, we are begging you to do is what you should have done, which is really listen to everybody in this town, not just the people who voted for you. And so we're very, very deeply disappointed in the leadership and in the form of democracy that you have chosen to enact for our town.
Um, Dr. Good, let me just say, I think there's only one form of democracy, but there's no circumstance under which anyone could vote for a replacement to fill this vacancy until next November. Okay, um, let me finish speaking, please. Given the time when Tara moved and was, became disqualified to serve as a board member, it's my understanding pursuant to election law that there is no way that anyone could vote for her until, vote for that replacement until next November. That's the way it works. If you don't like that, you can lobby state legislature.
Think about what I like or not like.
And, and I appreciate saying, you know, wait until after the election. But again, there will still be a vacancy. So you will still be in the same position of having a town board then appoint that vacancy. Whether Holly or Chris win the next election, there will still be a vacancy in Tara's seat. So it's still going to be the people sitting up here who will replace that, that, you know, position until the next election, which will occur in November, at which time every constituent in town who was registered to vote and able to vote will be able to weigh in on that and that candidate. So that's the way it works. And I understand what you're saying and I hear you and I think everyone does and you may not like it and it may not be, you know, politically expedient for certain people in this room, but that's the law. And there's, the only way to fill a vacancy with the timeline that we had is for the people sitting up here to appoint that person. Otherwise, we will be without somebody for a full year potentially. And the problem with that, especially given the pandemic and the fact that Governor Hope will remove the executive order so we can no longer meet virtually, is that if anyone gets COVID or anyone gets sick or anyone gets trav, has to travel, there's actually a possibility, and this happened last week, when one town board member was sick and one couldn't be here for work, that we didn't have a quorum. So to, to not fill that would be completely irresponsible at this point.
So Ms. Katz, this is my first town board meeting that I've spoken at. I, I, I was under the impression that this is just public comment, not debate with the town board, so I'm not actually prepared to do-
I'm just giving you information. You don't have to debate me.
But I'm going to reply.
Sure.
I'm not necessarily prepared with the facts for a real debate, but what I can tell you is that, again, many of us in town feel that the, there was no transparency, that there was actually another option for this board to take that you chose not to do. And other people in this room probably have more specific details about what that would look like. So I'm not prepared to discuss that. But what I can also share with you is that I personally, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I am really tired of any time anybody disagrees with this town board, that the reaction we get back is that we are somehow ignorant and uninformed about process. I've had this personal interaction with you many times and every time that you and I disagree, either in Facebook or in person, you imply that I just don't know what the rules are or I just don't know what the facts are. And that is really, really, I, I don't know that I've ever been mansplained by another woman before. And so that again is deeply, deeply disappointing to me. So again, I'm asking you, as the leader of this town, not just the leader of the people who voted for your slate, to understand the pain that this decision has caused many, many people here. And I disagree that there was not a different way forward because so many people here have suggested ways that you could have. And so let's just own it. Your board chose to move forward in this way and now the reaction, the consequence of that is that people are angry. It's not political. It's not political pitchforks. It is that we are angry that our voice has been silenced. That is not democracy and I expect more from my town and my town board.
Thank you.
Again, I, I didn't realize this was a debate, but-
I'm debating. I'm just saying everyone will be able to vote.
But you're, again, you're not hearing. I don't think you're really hearing us. No, I don't think you are. So let me explain this to you. We are not able to have our voices heard in who this next person will be on the board because of the choices that this board made around the timing for the way things played out. That's, that's the bottom line. It has to do with timing and this is timing that, that your board chose to move, to slow roll it out so that you, we're, we're put in this position of, well, here's what we are allowed to do and we're going to move forward with that. Once again, what you can do and what's the right thing to do aren't always the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah.
No, we're gonna, she hasn't spoken yet, so.
That's fine.
Hey, guys. My name is Susan Comey, nine Barkley Road. Forgive me for reading off my phone, but I haven't sat still for more than ten minutes today. So I just wanted to share some, some thoughts that I have, particularly in light of the discussion about disenfranchising a group of people in this community. Because I think there's a lot of people in this community that would feel disenfranchised if you did anything different than what you're doing. So I guess I'll start by saying the Newcastle Democratic Committee has every single systemic benefit in this town. Everyone has benefit of a town that's comprised of over fifty percent registered Democrats. It has years, if not decades, of history and experience, straightforward access to the ballot, a built-in fundraising infrastructure, and as a result of that fundraising infrastructure, automatic endorsements all the way up to the chain, all the way up the chain to governor. They have a built-in and seasoned infrastructure for canvassing, phone banking, letter writing. There, their supporters control all but one of the major town social media pages. They have the support of the left-leaning local newspaper. Despite all of that, despite being at a major systemic disadvantage on every single front, Unite Newcastle, a brand-new independent committee comprised of a collection of residents from all stripes, won four out of four seats in an election less than a year ago on, in a completely issue-driven campaign. UNC overcame all of that systemic power to take all four seats. Majority of voters in this town rejected the NTC's vision in favor of yours, Lisa, Chris, and Vicky. The majority of voters felt so strongly that the NTC did not even pick up a single seat. I understand why they're screaming so loudly about this appointment. I really do. It makes complete sense. But it doesn't change the fact that you have a responsibility to the majority of Newcastle residents who voted all four Unite Newcastle candidates into those seats you're sitting in right now. You have a responsibility to fill Tara's vacant seat with someone whose vision meshes with yours. You have a responsibility to all the people across all political ideologies who came together in this town to elect you, to appoint someone who will work constructively with you on all the issues facing our town to execute the vision Unite Newcastle was elected to execute. You have a responsibility to appoint someone as allowed by law and to not disenfranchise all the people who spoke so clearly in the election last November. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Cynthia Seamus again. I just want to say two quick things that I neglected to say a moment ago and I apologize for forgetting. One is actually related to the timing situation. Factually, Tara's house was actually sold in contract for sale in July. And for the people listening who may not be aware, that means that she a hundred percent knew that she intended to move whether or not that sale went through. She fully intended to move by the end of July, which means it's very likely that several of you also knew that. I can't say exactly when and I cannot really speculate. But what I do know is that in the first week of August approximately, the deadline passed for someone to have run for that seat. And if there had been transparency among this board in saying, hi, I'm Tara. My house just got an accepted offer and I intend to move to Rhode Island, right? And I intend to resign my seat. If that had happened in July, then we wouldn't be all here and we wouldn't be angry. We would not have a conflict at all because someone could have run for the seat. Right? So I, when, whenever the, whenever you're saying like, oh, uh, this is the only way that it could have happened, that's really not true. And, and I, I am sorry to say this, but I simply don't believe that no one sitting up there knew that Tara's house was on the market, that you didn't know that she was moving, that you didn't know she enrolled her kids in school in Rhode Island. I just don't believe it and most of us don't believe it. So that's one thing. Secondarily, I actually really appreciate Susan um, finally coming out and saying the quiet part out loud, which is that you're not Democrats. She just drew a violent contrast.
I'm sorry, you need to stop now.
No, I don't.
Because that is not true. I've been a registered Democrat since I was eighteen. That is not what she said. Excuse me, I'm allowed to correct inaccuracies, especially when she is, no. I'm not. Because I've been a Democrat since I registered at the age of eighteen. Just because I am not affiliated with the Newcastle Democratic Committee and I had to run in a different party in order to unseat their incumbents does not mean I am not a Democrat. So I would appreciate you not trying to malign anybody on this town board.
Unite Newcastle is not a Democratic slate, period. And that is what Susan said and I agree.
It's not what I said, it's not what she said. It's not what I said, it's not what she said.
And I am agreed.
I know. Yes. Okay.
Right, for once, I actually agree with him. He is, he is right. This does not need to be a debate. And and I'm not trying to debate, but that is what you just said. A very di-.
So don't debate.
A very defined line was drawn just now publicly by one of your big mouthpieces. Who specifically said there's a huge contrast between the Unite Newcastle slate and the Democrats.
What is, does this have something to do with tonight's appointment?
Yes, it does. Yes.
Get on to that, cause we have a long agenda.
Yes, but this is public comment and I am taking the opportunity to put these comments on the record.
Yes. I know, I'm just saying that the predecessors to us had a three-minute timer, which we've taken away. Because I didn't think it was appropriate to give people three minutes to speak.
You're right.
However, I would like you to just be mindful of everyone, especially I think there are people on there who haven't spoken yet.
Right. I I am gonna wrap it up, but I just wanted to point out that when people talk about uniting a town. And then say things like that, it has the complete opposite reaction. As you see, it made me mad, it made them mad, and it agitated all of you as well. So I'm just taking the chance to point out that if in fact, we want to unite this town. Many, many things continue to happen that are doing the exact opposite of that. And I uh, I do appreciate you taking the time to listen. Um, but I did want to correct the record about the timing. Um, because someone a hundred percent knew that Tara was leaving before the cutoff date. When an election could have been held. And I don't believe that nobody knew that. I don't believe it was a coincidence and I just wanted to get that out there.
Okay, thank you for your wisdom. Okay, thank you. Um, Jacqueline, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi Lisa, um, I just wanted to comment.
Can you just, wait, I'm sorry, can you just state your full name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Jacqueline Maranas. Um, I am a resident of Newcastle. I live at one workplace in Chapala. I just wanted to state, I am so grateful for your leadership. Um, and how the town board has followed the law and and obligation to appoint a vacancy. As we all know, it's the town board's obligation to pick the best person for the job. I really wish that those in the room would take the time to get to know the appointee. Who is a bright, selfless mother of three, who is volunteering her time to serve our community. The town of Newcastle is lucky to have this individual on the town board. Tonight's meeting unfortunately has not been the walk by my tushy table floor. Uh, if those in the room would give her the opportunity to prove that what she can do, I think they will recognize how lucky they are. So I wanted to thank you Lisa for giving her the opportunity and how grateful I am to have her on the town board. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Just can you state your, yeah.
Hi, my name is Marie Short. I live at twenty-four Gregory Lane in Millwood. Um, congratulations to Alexandra. Um, I just wanted to point out a few things. Um, it's coming across as a little surprising that you're surprised at the outcry. When, um, Tara announced, uh, I believe it was ten days. Between when she announced she might be leaving. And when she was fully disqualified. Um, and I think anyone who's ever moved Harrell's knows that that's awfully quick. Um, and so I'm hoping you can understand why people would be quite surprised and taken aback by that. Um, and particularly when during the meeting when she first announced that she might be leaving. Um, Jeremy, I think Jeremy asked when the rest of the board knew. And a few, I I I can't remember which board members, but we could go back and look. Said, well, I didn't definitively know, which indicates, you know, you certainly did have a good idea this was happening. So, um, I think it should be understood that people would be surprised and taken aback by all this and that. These are genuine emotions people have. There is not, it's not just some sort of calculated thing here. The people are truly taken aback. Um, so thank you and again, congratulations to Alexandra.
Thank you, Marie. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Annette Clearwaters, thirty-five North Place. I um, didn't realize there were so many Mitch McConnell version twenty sixteen fans here. Wanting to wait till the election. That was kinda his shtick with Merrick Garland.
Uh, can you speak up? It's hard to hear you.
I just wanna say, I'm here anything. I just wanna say that I really appreciate democracy. And my definition of democracy is when you have an actual choice, not when you have one candidate to vote for. Which is what would have happened if the Newcastle Democratic Committee's wishes had come true. Where one candidate, their candidate would have been able to be on the ballot in November. So I would say I'd rather have a vote in one year than have to wait three years, which is what would have happened. So that's my idea of a democracy. Maybe not others, but I appreciate what you did. Thanks. Thank you.
Um, any other comments?
The issue here is not who you appointed.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and your address, please?
Uh, Steven Comerberg, I live five crossways. The issue here isn't who you appointed. I'm sure you appointed a person uh, who was very well qualified. The issue here is transparency.
I'm sorry, can the audience, please?
The issue is, it looks bad, the way she resigned, the way she timed her resigning. It it looks like it was done in a way to avoid public having a say in who the appointment's gonna be. And it just smells. You have every right to appoint who you want. When you don't have an election, but if she would have resigned the way she should have resigned, we would have had an election. Okay? And it just looks bad. And it's not political. It has nothing to do with the New Newcastle Democratic Committee or anything like that. It has to do with how it looks bad that you took away the right to vote.
I didn't do anything.
I didn't say you. I'm talking about, well, I don't know, cause I don't know when you first found out Tara was thinking of moving. When did you find out Tara was thinking of moving?
You know what? I I know somebody, I have about fifteen friends, just so you know. Who moved during the pandemic, cause they got a ridiculous price for their homes. And you know where they still live? In Newcastle. Fifteen people.
When did you find out she was leaving the town?
I'm not answering you. I found out when she was leaving the town on the day she resigned. That is when I found out.
When did she know to make the decision?
I don't know when she knew.
Well, you didn't think to ask?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. And another thing you said that's, you want, you mentioned that you want straight facts. You ran as a Republican and you never came to the Democratic Committee to even ask for your support. Alright? So Democratic Committee, we do it open publicly. We go out, we ask anyone who wants to run to come to run and it's done in front of everyone. But my problem here is your transparency. You have every right to appoint whoever you want by vote on the board. But if this looks like a Trumpian thing, where you did something to make sure we can't vote. And that's the problem. And that's not the right thing to happen in this country. And it looks bad. And you should treat the people in the audience with respect.
I will. Respect is earned though. So everyone needs to speak, everyone needs to treat each other with respect. And I agree with you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay, anyone else in person here would like to speak?
Here you go. Is that what you do to everybody?
No, you're not on the board. You're not on the board. You're not on the board. You're not on the board.
Just do your thing.
I'm not talking to you, you know?
Hey, Rob, Rob, guys, enough.
We've not said anything.
I'm not attacking anybody. I'm asking everyone to, I'm, that's why I said enough to everyone. I agree. Please state your name and address.
Rob Fleischer, Edelkill Road.
Mm-hmm.
And I, my hat's off to you for having people allowed to speak. And voice their concerns and voice their opinions. And the Yankees won, they did. Which is why I was late. And priorities. And I, since the day that this group was elected. There have been attempts to undermine the town board majority, big one. The article and the concession was not gracious, not at all. The first organization meeting when Chris was appointed was not gracious, okay? And it's really disappointing. It's been non-stop. So when people say that they're not angry at you, there's a certain portion of town. That supported the oppo- opposing candidates, that's been angry in trying to undermine this board. And the second that the, the opposing slate conceded back last November, less than a year ago. And it's been non-stop. So, let me read now what I wrote. I am pleased to see that the town board will be appointing someone to fill the open seat on the board tonight. It has been very concerning to see statements telling all the voters who came out less than a year ago. After a very long and involved election cycle. That our votes led to a complete change in town board leadership and direction no longer mattered. And that all the work people put into that election no longer counted. Holly and the NCDC leadership are telling us that despite an unprecedented four-zero sweep of the seats up for election. That the current town board should wait until after the next election. Rather than fill the open seat with someone who is willing to work constructively, constructively. With Lisa, Vicky, and Chris on the platform that you ran on less than a year ago.
And Jeremy. I guess not, clearly not. That was clear.
Excuse me. Holly and the NCDC leadership, people like Jane back there. Want to move the goalposts and say that unless the majority of voters come out again. And reaffirm all the votes that were legally cast last year. From now on election day, that those votes from last year do not empower you. The current town board to vote on an appointment tonight as provided for under state law. And it's somehow they are being disenfranchised. Not even thinking at all about the fact that the majority of voters, how they might be disenfranchised if you didn't. There's been a lot of talk about process and good governance, but very little discussion about respecting the votes that were cast. Less than a year ago. I understand the political strategy being deployed. It's not even remotely subtle. Okay? It's never subtle. But it would be incredibly disappointing if this town board does not act to fill the vacancy tonight. And I think the people who came out and supported you would feel totally disenfranchised. And would be really taken aback. That everything they tried to work for last year, all of a sudden. Led to, you know, not being fulfilled. We can't control all the things that happen in life. I understand that. Bad things happen all the time. It happened to me in my life. I know others of you on the board have gone through things. We can't control those things. But less than a year ago, the votes and the message we sent should still count. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight and while I hope that residents will support the town board's decision to move forward. My expectations kind of have kind of been realized that there was a tremendous amount of politically motivated statements. Designed to undermine you and the current town board majority. By people who support Holly and the NCD efforts locally. And while continuing to ignore the fact that Holly's largest campaign contributor attempted to smear. One of the sitting town board members and his wife through a ridiculous ethics complaint. And lies about an active, ongoing investigation, he's ironically been lectured about ethics.
What does this have to do with the matter before the board?
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you for all your continued service. Well, this is what people brought up, so I'm commenting on what people, I'm commenting.
It's an honor of unethical behavior since you asked.
Okay? So I thank you for your continued service. I thank you for your patience in dealing with. What we've, what you've heard tonight and I look forward to you fulfilling the obligations that you have as a town board. Because what I saw from the previous year, when we only have four people, a lot of things slipped through the cracks. And the board was overwhelmed and there's a lot of work to do. So I look forward to whoever is joining, joining the committee, I missed that part of the meeting, I'm sorry. And uh, I'm sure they'll do well. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Okay, um, Margaret? You can unmute yourself.
Good evening. Hi, this is Margaret Ferguson. I live on Seven Bridges Road. Uh, terror people bemoan the supposed disenfranchisement of the electorate is really the ultimate in buttsup. For one, one thing that is being overlooked is the fact that the last town board, the one sitting in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Refused over the course of more than a year to listen to the hundreds and hundreds of residents. Who begged that board to not pursue, pursue the heavily pro-developer form base code. Because it was absolutely not right for the community. And it came out of a process that cut out ordinary residents and many other stakeholders. Talk about disenfranchisement. Last year's then sitting town board majority excluding Lisa were not to be deterred. They tried to push through a pandemic, no less. In fact, it was firmly stated several times over the summer of twenty twenty. That the then upcoming November election would not matter. Because the form-based code was going to be adopted before the new board members took their seats. What thwarted those plans was the resiliency of residents and a determined grassroots group. All of whom refused to give up and the unanimous victory of the Unite Newcastle slate. I hope people see what has been said tonight and criticism of this appointment for what it is. Total hypocrisy that is nothing more than political expediency. I thank this board for making the appointment. I do not know the appointee. But I have confidence she is well-suited to serve on this board. I thank her for being willing to take on this responsibility. And sincerely wish her the best in her service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, any other, I see some noochie little ones. Uh, any other um, comments on this? Okay. Missy?
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, just a quick question. Why can this appointment, why cannot, why, excuse me? Why does this appointment have to happen now as opposed to after the um, election? I just don't understand why. If you can explain that to me, please.
Because we're trying to ensure that the seat can be filled in an expedient manner. Given all of the uh, reasons that I mentioned earlier.
But can it, can it not be filled in expedient manner in three weeks' time?
It doesn't matter. There will still be a vacancy after the election, Missy.
No, I understand there's still be a vacancy after the election, but after the election. Whoever is sitting in the town board can then, you know, still do that appointment. Um, so I'm just wondering why, it just feels rushed to me. I'm just curious about that.
Thank you. It's, it's, I I don't believe it's rushed. I think we have phenomenal candidates who we were able to interview. Um, from all, with all political backgrounds, all different ideologies. And uh, and I feel very proud of the candidate that actually is willing and able, despite all of this, to put herself out there for the board.
And I agree with you that the candidate who you selected, I don't know his candidate, but I agree, you know, I understand that.
Um, can we, I'm sorry, can we try to keep it down a little bit? It's hard to hear. Thank you.
Oh, I was just, I was just about to say that, you know, again, I, this is not about the candidate who is selected. And perhaps that same slate of candidates could be the candidates that might be um, interviewed. But just in, you know, after the election. I don't understand why they can't be, why does it, why does it have to happen now? That's the part I'm understanding.
We're losing our board. We no longer have a quorum at the table. Um, yeah. I, no, we're not taking a break. We're just, okay. Thank you, thank you, Missy. Um, can we get the rest of the town board back here? I think uh, we're done with public comment. Do we need to call anybody? What's happening back there?
It's all good.
No, it's fine.
It's good.
Do we need to call security?
No, it's fine.
But we're unable to hear at the town board table.
Alright, can everyone please come back into this room?
Lisa, um, maybe we should take a, a three-minute recess, sorry.
No, okay, being no more public comments, I think we're gonna close the public hearing. We're gonna take a, a two-minute recess, and then we're gonna come back. Okay, thank you everyone for your comments. Tell me when we're good. Okay, thank you. Alright, welcome back. That was an interesting break we just had. Um, if, if everyone inside could please try to be quiet. If you wanna talk, you're more than welcome to, but please take it outside of the room. Um, alright, so now that we've closed public comment, can I have, um, is there anyone who'd like to read this resolution?
That's nice, but just in terms of process, will we have an opportunity to
We're gonna, after, yes, after we vote.
To say something after, after we read the resolution? Okay. So, I will read this resolution. Um, I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas on November second, twenty twenty-one, Tara Castle was elected to serve as a council member on the town board of the town of Newcastle for a four-year term, commencing on January one, twenty twenty-two. And whereas Castle took office on January fourth, twenty twenty-two, but effective September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two resigned from her position on the town board. And whereas Alexandra L. Kemtop is duly qualified and willing to serve as a council member on the town board in the seat vacated by Castle, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to New York Town Law Section sixty-four five and New York Public Officers Law Section forty-two one, the town board hereby appoints Alexandra L. Kemtop to serve as a council member on the town board until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And be it further resolved that the town clerk is directed to formally advise the Westchester County Board of Elections to make a provision for the unexpired three-year term of council member on the town board to be filled at the general election to be held on November seven, twenty twenty-three. And be it further resolved that the town clerk shall take such other and further steps as may be necessary to implement this resolution.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, thank you. The motion carries. Congratulations. Um, sure, come on up.
Hello and good evening. First, let me thank Lisa, Vicky, Chris, and Jeremy for appointing me to our town board. I am humbled by the opportunity to serve our community that I love so much. My husband and I left Brooklyn in twenty sixteen looking for a bit more space and a respite from city life. In just a few short years, we have planted deep roots within Newcastle. Now we have two children in elementary school and our third finishing her last year of preschool. Serving on the town board is a chance for me to learn from those who have served before me and an opportunity for me to offer my unique experience, skill, and perspective. Currently, I am a caseworker for a nonprofit where I manage a roster of clients who are facing eviction, homelessness, and housing insecurity. I am also a volunteer mediator in family court where I work with clients to establish parenting plans and work through other issues related to custody and visitation. I'm also an active member of the West Orchard PTA, and since twenty sixteen, I have served on various parent committees for the Early Childhood Centre at Temple Bethel. My background and interests have always centered around public sector work and service. Leadership is about relationships. We are at our best when we care for each other and work together. I look forward to getting to work to ensure that Newcastle continues to be the wonderful place that it is now and for generations to come. Thank you. Thank you.
And Ally, I want to welcome you and thank you. Um, I know that we all on this board, uh, unanimously welcome your viewpoints, experiences, and commitment to serving our community, um, as we all do up here with, uh, attention, transparency, ethics, and respect. So, thank you so much. Um, so I think we're gonna take a little break and actually swear you in. So, I know you have your, your family here, so we wanted to do that before they have to go to sleep.
Yeah, that's right. Come and go.
Is that okay?
Is it okay?
Yeah, we're gonna take a picture. Yeah, go for it.
Do we all stand or what?
I don't know, we're all standing. Wait, talk louder, talk louder.
Oh, okay. I have a hard time doing that. Okay, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Alexandra Chentab.
Chentab.
I. That's okay.
I, Alexandra Chentab.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As town council member.
As town council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Yay!
Okay. Gang's all here. Thank you, Jeremy. I wanted to add, let's go Yankees, but I forgot.
Actually, you gotta get your door.
Easy to remember. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you! Thank you guys, proud of your mom. Thank you for doing that. So, you actually just got turned in, you can stay. Alright, um, while Ally is saying goodbye to her family, I think, um, we still have a quorum sitting up here. So, um, if anyone did have anything they wanted to say about the vote, I appreciate waiting till now so we could get her, um, children home, so, um, feel free.
Alright, I'll, I'll lead off. Um, so I prepared some remarks that I wanted to share and explore anything towards the town board. Um, but since the cat is out of the bag, I certainly support Ally and, and I'm excited to have her join.
I'm sorry.
So you don't have to listen to me.
Sorry.
You'll hear me plenty of times, too many times to count. So, while in advance of the two thousand nineteen election, Ivy Poole, Jason Lipton-Toll, and I shared with the community how we would vote to fill the empty seat vacated by Ivy, um, if, pardon me, the, the, uh, empty seat vacated by Ivy if she won the position as town supervisor. Very simply, we agreed, and there was certainly community buy-in, that we would appoint-
I'm sorry, Jeremy, hold on one second. Um, guys out in the hallway, if there's any chance to just move it to a dull roar, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
We can't because of open meetings, you can't close it.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead. Can't close the door. No, Jane, you can't close the door.
Don't, don't, don't close the door, you can't close it for open meetings.
Open meetings. Thank you.
I don't know if you had the vote door open.
I know, thank you.
Um, very simply, we agreed, and there was certainly community buy-in, that we would appoint the highest vote receiver who did not win the election. While these are very different circumstances today, we did this knowing full well that even if one of us lost, that it could mean not only one would, one adversary from the election would win, but the appointed candidate could be on the board as well. This was not about politics, because we agreed to pick any opponent knowing they were endorsed by the Republican Party. By default, it was going to be the other side. We did so because we believed, as I still do now, that that is how you unite, that is how you build bridges. I still believe that in being open and picking the candidate with the highest number of votes, we send a message to the community that we were picking a person not born from favoritism, but who demonstrated a willingness to put him or herself out in front of strangers and neighbors alike. Most importantly, appointing as we did in two thousand and nineteen demonstrated that words transparency and good governance meant something when there's action backing it up. Ultimately, I received three thousand and one votes, Jason, two thousand and ninety-two, two thousand nine hundred eighty-two, and Lauren Levin, who was a runner-up, one thousand eight hundred twenty-one. In this most recent two thousand twenty-one election, where the form-based code absolutely was a catalyst and galvanized voters to come out, and there was a benefit of three open seats per council as opposed to two, Tara Castle received two thousand six hundred thirty-seven votes, and Andrea San Savarino-Galan, two thousand five hundred sixty-five. Lori Morton was the next highest candidate, and that selection process for those two seats were two thousand two hundred sixty-five votes. Clearly, despite winning by a far wider margin and receiving more votes, the two thousand and nineteen town board put community, not politics, first. Hands down, our open and resident first decision was the right one, period. Lauren Levin was and still is an amazing asset to our community, just as Ally, Chentab, will be as well. And our decision to appoint her gave community confidence that they knew our plan to fill the seat wasn't born from politics. They also had the confidence knowing that our decision was not, certainly not at the behest of the Newcastle Democratic Committee, because we ultimately chose someone endorsed by the Republican Party. They are not, as some like to say, or make them out to be, some Tammy Hall machine. In the span of less than three weeks, from the community being notified that Tara was vacating her seat to the town board, we are now appointing a new town board member. The town board has failed our community behind a closed-door, secretive, non-engaging, resident-first process. Almost a local version of what some people might call three men in a room, or in this case, four. As I said before, just because we can do something doesn't mean we should. Um, to that point, I want to draw everyone's attention to our meeting with the planning board back on September twentieth of this year, only a few weeks ago. There, we were discussing charrettes and ULI, which is the Urban Land Institute. And during that conversation, each of us had something to share that was central to our opinion and view on that process. While no doubt a significant issue, charrettes certainly pale, in my opinion, to picking a candidate or a person to represent your community. Vicky, you had said, and I'm gonna paraphrase, and if I don't say it correctly, I apologize in advance, but when we talk about vision, I think what's most, most important about inclusivity, and, pardon me, when we talk about vision, I think what's important is inclusivity and that vision. We have to have a process that the community feels respected. Now, it was one of the things that was missing in the form-based code process. And whether I agree or not, that certainly is what a lot of people felt. The way that we go out to communities with people will be very important. We have to structure things in a way that we feel, uh, they were accommodated in a reasonable fashion. It has to be a careful process that can't be too fast. Chris, you had said, "I don't wanna go back five or ten years and say we did something dramatic," and didn't have the very significant buy-in from the community about that process. And then both of you said something to the effect that it needed to be slow and thoughtful. Lisa, you said, concerning, again, not this topic, but the ULI, that interviews with a hundred people is not enough, it wasn't a good cross-section of the town. And I share that with you, not as a, as a got you, but if it was important enough to have that kind of interfacing and lack of speed and involvement in the community, and allow the community to feel involved for a potential charrette process, just because we can do something here that's different doesn't mean we should. And that is why I think it should have been more of an open, engaging process. We are, I think, eleven days out from early voting, twenty-two days from knowing who the next candidate will be. I think if the shoe was on the other foot, if the evil sinister perceived as such Democratic Committee and Democratic candidates are in this same position, I think not only would everyone be upset here, and rightfully so, I, I think some of the loudest advocates, some we even heard from tonight, would be burning their vocal cords and wearing out their keyboards on Facebook because they were upset with what we did. Lauren Levin was absolutely the best person for the job. Lauren Levin was absolutely the best person for the job, no qualms about it, and I am equally confident that Ally will be as well. And I'm very hopeful that no one, or more importantly, Ally, your mother, your husband, your children, thought for a second, at least not from anyone on this town board, that you were not welcomed and that we're not excited to have you on the town board, or that anyone thinks you can't do a good a job if not better than anyone sitting up here. Simply, I think all of us, without saying that, are in agreement, otherwise you wouldn't be here. You have demonstrated an interest in public service. You said you were working with conflict resolution, which fortunately is not normally an issue in this town, there's not much conflict. So it may not be useful to have that skill set, but if you need it, it's great that you have it here. My complaint is not about you one bit at all, it's just that lack of process that I feel that we should have done a better job from the beginning, more transparent, and not as rushed. I really waffled, waffled. I really was stuck whether I was going to abstain or vote for you. And to Vicky's credit, Vicky, you know, kind of poked me a few times, and I went back and forth and back and forth. And seeing the reactions tonight and the frustration shouldn't be borne upon you on your shoulders. And at some point, even if I disagree, or Vicky, or Lisa, or Chris disagrees, or anyone who's up here disagrees, it's incumbent upon us to sort of suck it up and try to get rid of the spans and have more bridge. So I thank you for bringing whatever tools you have to build a bridge, I don't know what they are. But I'm excited to have you join us, and we will push forward, we will disagree, we will agree, and we'll get things done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is Nadia, you want to say? Um, I'm thinking about it, does Chris want to say anything?
It's up to you if you want to, Deputy.
I'll say a few words. I don't think I'll be as organized as Jeremy just was, I'll try. First of all, I want to say, I want to thank everyone who spoke today. Even though we may differ on a number of things, or we may find that we actually don't differ on many things. To those who are glad that we engaged in this process, to those who are not glad about it at all, I do appreciate everyone coming and stating their opinions, and I respect all of those opinions. I think that there are points to be had on both the pros and cons of how we've conducted the process. The way I've looked at it, and I'll share this, I'll blather on a little bit about my thinking, and if it's not appropriate for the town board, so be it. I served on the school board for about 10 years, and so I hope you'll forgive me for taking a bit of that baggage with me. It was a nonpartisan position, and we had a clear focus, which was the best interests of students. So that was quite easy. This is a little different. And the way I've approached this, and I'm going to talk about efficiency and democracy, so I'm gonna touch on the efficiency part for now. The way I've looked at this is to think about what is the best interests of this town. We have a $46 million budget, we have a hard-working administration, a lot of departments, town council, boards and commissions, many people who make this town run so effectively and beautifully. We also now have an in-person quorum requirement when we are definitely not out of COVID. And like Lisa said last week, we almost were unable to complete the town board budget sessions. So we've been asked by a number of people to wait until the election before making the appointment, and that it would be more democratic. I see that as somewhat of a fallacy. As Lisa mentioned, there would be no election for this person. The real story here is who would get to make the nomination. Is it someone from Team A or someone from Team B? And that would require us to wait not just until next month, but until January to fill the vacancy. And the vacancy, and perhaps many other matters, could possibly be at an impasse. So the working of town government is my priority. It's not a game between Team A and Team B. In the larger context, all council members are temporary. The town was here before us, the town will be here after we are gone, and we have a responsibility toward it more than to ourselves. As to the democratic process, as I said before, no matter who wins this election, it would be a nomination from this table. No one knows who either of the candidates would want to nominate. The filling of a vacancy is a well-established protocol, whether it's on a governing board or on a private board. I've been involved in it before on other boards. Both efficiency and the democratic process are embedded in that procedure. We have a right and obligation to fill a vacancy. But a vacancy is filled not for the duration of a term, but only until the next election. So it's a temporary stopgap and not for the entire term. The position will be on the ballot at the next election. So Ally, I was so impressed by your credentials. You are amply suited for the job. Your work as a caseworker and mediator for the Yonkers Community Services will serve you well here. You're a former district attorney, you've worked in the Bronx and at the Westchester DA's office. You've lived here for six years in Newcastle. You've engaged in community service through the PTA and through preschool activities. And I know that you grew up in New Rochelle, which is a very diverse environment. And I want to say, of all the people we interviewed, you're the only one who has not been involved in town electoral politics. And I thought that was a plus. You know, I won't say anymore about that, but I thought that there was some level of neutrality in that, whether people agree or not. I feel that Ally represents new residents, which is a voice that we haven't had on this town board for a long time. It's a new and needed perspective and sort of two-way. We'll hear from someone with that perspective, and perhaps you will share your views of the town board with new residents in that constituency, and I think that would be very helpful and refreshing for the town. So I just want to say thank you for offering your services to our town. And I want to thank everyone who came by and spoke really from the heart and told us what you thought. And I wish us all good luck. I don't think that Ally is a controversial person, and I think that everyone will enjoy having her on the town board, regardless of your thoughts about the process. So that's all I have to say for now.
All right, and I sort of gave my comments before we started this process this evening, but I do want to reiterate what Vicky's saying and let everyone know who spoke tonight, despite it getting a little heated, that we hear you, and we've heard you, and we always hear you. And while we may disagree on the process and what occurred tonight, I do think it was democratic, and I do appreciate your input that we've been hearing for the last few weeks. And it hasn't gone unheated, we did take it under advisement. I'm also happy that the town board could unanimously come together to appoint Ally, because I do think that while we interviewed five phenomenal candidates, all who brought something great to the table, I do think that you shone above them all. And I think that you really will bring, you know, collaboration to the town board as well as a viewpoint and a demographic that we don't necessarily see anymore. I mean, I think all of us have kids who are older, and it's, I feel as though you may see issues that we don't see on a daily basis, and I think that will be invaluable to the board as well. Again, I do just want to reiterate to everybody that there was nothing unethical here, there was nothing untoward, and there was no political maneuvering. This was really a story about somebody selling her home, finally getting all contingencies out of the way, and realizing that at that point she was gonna move. It was not convenient, I will agree, to putting someone on the ballot. Had she moved earlier, or at least established that she no longer had residency here, I agree, it would have been much better to be able to put somebody on the ballot. But that didn't happen, that's the situation we're in. And so we are lucky that we were able to find someone to step up until the next election can happen, who is so phenomenal, so we're happy to have you. And you may even decide you like it and actually want to run for the seat. So, you know, that being said, I do want everyone to know that we are listening, and we hear you, and we always want the town board to be a place where you can contact us with your thoughts and opinions, because, again, as a famous resident said, it takes a village. And, you know, we were elected up here to represent this town, but it's important to hear from everyone. And, you know, one of the things we were elected to do, as happens in Congress and anywhere else, if there's a vacancy, there is an appointment to fill that vacancy until the next election. And that's simply what occurred here, and I feel very thankful that we were able to find such a wonderful candidate. So thank you, we're looking forward to working with you, all of us, and I appreciate it. All right, so, welcome, and we're gonna hop right into your first town board meeting after this. And we're actually going to move to the supervisors' report. I don't have much other than we are having in-town Halloween trick-or-treating on October 28th. If you want to help our very generous merchants, it costs in excess of $500 for each of them. I think actually they're being conservative in that estimate. In candy, there is a donation box downstairs if anyone would like to donate any candy that will be equitably distributed among all our merchants in town. So I just wanted to put that out there. Everything else, you'll be able to read in the supervisors' report tomorrow. Community Corner, we actually haven't had an in-person town board official meeting for a while, so I have a number of things to announce. First, these were already in the newsletter, but I wanted to make sure to say happy first birthday to Maya Marmon, happy sixth birthday to Ben Rubin, happy 12th birthday to Xander Wong, happy 40th birthday to Alexa and Matt Penziner, happy birthday to Councilwoman Victoria Tip, happy birthday to Dean H., happy birthday to Caitlin Fishman, and happy 13th birthday to Marissa Goldfarb. Those already happened, but I wanted to make.
I told her not to do that.
Happy birthday.
I used that not to put it on the sign, not that.
Definitely not.
It was not on the sign. So I just wanted to get those out there, and then also, these have not yet occurred, but we want to wish a happy 7th birthday to Samuel Moda-Medinia, happy 11th birthday to Jai Trapathy, happy 6th birthday to Juliet Hollick, happy 1st birthday to Annalise Cosiga, happy 80th birthday to Sue Cap. And then we also want to wish a very good luck to our 6th grade Blue Heat softball team in the GHVSL playoffs that are beginning October 20th.
Yay.
And. So look for your best wishes on the electronic sign in front of the train station. All right, so that being said, and again, if you have anything you would like to announce and you would like to appear on the sign, please send an email to communitycorner@mynewcastle.org. Rob, you've been waiting a while, anything from the town administrators' report?
Not much, just to mention the Rag Muffin Parade is on Sunday, I think at 12:30.
Yes.
And then, is it Saturday night, is the event at Chat Pack?
Saturday.
Saturday night.
Hmm.
Children's program at Chat Pack for Ally.
Yes. All right, um, perfect, thank you. So we will open it up if there is any other public comment and new business other than public comment that we heard already, please, I don't think we want to go back there.
All right, again, Holly McCall, Newcastle resident, 170 South Bedford Road, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I actually just wanted to mention that in addition to the election, there's also a proposition on the ballot, the New York State Environmental Bond Act. And I just wanted to ask you all to consider a resolution in support of the bond act, just like our legislators have done in the county, as well as some of our neighboring communities.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So actually, you preempted my next statement, which is, we are considering that. And our legislators are all running for office, so they are a little busy right now. But we have asked, our sustainability advisory board has approached us with this, and we've asked them to come speak to the board about this resolution so that we can consider it before it appears on the ballot. All right, so now we are going to open our public hearings. We have a few of them. First, can I have a motion to open a public hearing on local law to amend Chapter 131 of the town code with respect to water?
So moved.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Ally, you're allowed to say aye. Just so you know.
I'm sustaining for the night.
To open the public hearing, you can. Ed, do you want to walk us through this one?
Sure, so this is a local law that will amend Chapter 131, which, as Bart explained to the board when he was here last, has a lot of technical provisions with respect to water service. And it's been many years, I'm just actually looking, that this chapter hasn't been amended until the 1990s most recently. So there's a lot that the town DBW has learned just through experience and best practices, and the purpose, as Bart explained, of these amendments is just to bring the code up to date. He walked the board through each of the changes that are being made and why, again, they're fairly technical in nature. There haven't been any revisions, suggested revisions, and I haven't seen any public comments in terms of the draft legislation.
Ed, I just want to mention Bart Carey is here remotely, if any of the board members have any questions for him.
Thanks, hi Bart. Sorry for keeping you so late. Does anyone have any questions from the board?
No, I would like to ask either Ed or Bart to explain a little further the nature of the changes so that people can understand what we're doing, if that's possible, Bart, yeah.
Sure, so there are several very numerous changes. Most of them are on water service line requirements, technicalities. Some of the other ones are on meter testing. There's a new requirement for large water consumers to have their meters tested, and the frequency of testing depends on their water use. There's also a new change for the town to be reimbursed for all water charges. Currently, the town has provisions to be reimbursed for water use through the meter, but this would also add on if there was a case where we had to do repairs to the service line, where we would be able to have the ability to be reimbursed for those costs as well. And the other kind of significant change is to the cross-connection control program whereby residents with backflow prevention devices need to get those tested annually. This would make all of those tests due on September 1st, which would give us much more uniform practice to ensure that those are done each year on a timely manner.
Great, thank you.
And we did.
Those are the major changes.
Yep, and we did talk about this in a work session a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yes.
All right, does anyone have any public comments on this, who's in the room? All right, is there anyone online who has a public comment on this?
I'd be shocked.
Do you have a comment on this?
Question. See, that's.
Wait, please wait till they, to state your name.
I'm Fleischer, Idiot Hill Road, Chapel Creek, New York. The backflow testing, how often are we supposed to be, have been doing that now?
Once a year.
Once per year, yes.
That's the current law.
Yes, that's actually a Westchester County Health Department law, and us as the local water purveyor are charged with enforcement.
What is the estimation of compliance of people who test their backflow once a year? What is the estimation of compliance of people who test their backflow once a year?
Uh right now, it's it's around uh sixty-five percent. So we are looking to improve upon that that rate, we should be close to one.
I'm like a self, I'm a self-admitting violator here, um but what does that entail? I'm the, I don't, I have no idea what it means, I think people should understand what what the law, you know, covers and stuffs. It's a cover of somebody-
Yeah. So we we sent out letters, uh you you should have received or one or more letters. We sent out first notice, second notice, third notice. And and right now, uh it's an annual test and there's kind of rolling due dates based on when you did the last test. So by having them all due on September first, that will help us in our administrative efforts uh to see that these these tests are done on time. Um so the backflow prevention devices are are usually at residents that either have a fire sprinkler system, a lawn irrigation, or a a swimming pool. And it's it's uh it's part of the state uh health law and then it's the county and the town as well. So it's a a requirement that needs to be fulfilled.
So for people who just had normal water service, they don't have, it's not a requirement?
Correct, yes, yeah, they're you, these devices are usually at-
Okay. I take back my mission guilt.
But the takeaway is, don't ignore mail from the town.
Right. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, so um seeing no other public comment on this, um I think we can just close this. So can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh so now, does anyone want to move to open the next public hearing?
I move to open up a public hearing on article uh one oh two, amend chapter one oh two, article four of the town code relating to new sewer connections.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um alright, wanna talk to us about this thrilling one too?
This one is, this is a one-pager, this one's relatively simple. This is an amendment to uh chapter one oh two sewer connections. So from time to time, uh the town will process applications to can, new applications to can, make a new sewer connection. And when those applications-
That's for a private home who wants to connect to our sewer system.
Correct, and when those applications come in, there's some cost that the town incurs diligencing the application. And in other contexts, especially land use applications, the town code makes an effort to have the costs associated with that work uh follow the person who or entity that's asking for the the benefit. So that the the cost is not uh you know, spread out among all taxpayers, it's just the person who's gonna benefit from the request. That's what this amendment does, so uh when those, and we don't have anything in the code right now that allows for that. This adds language so that um any costs that are associated with processing those types of applications will be um charged to the person asking for them.
And what typically would the costs be?
They're they're nominal, but they're not nothing, they're, it's not something that the town um really should sort.
Right, and I agree, other taxpayers should not bear that burden.
A thousand dollars, you know, it's not tens of thousands, but it's not trivial.
Alright, um thank you, anyone have any questions for Ed or or Bart on this?
Nope.
Okay, any public comment? Rob? Alright, anyone online have a public comment?
No hands I raise.
Okay, that's not surprising. So uh being that there are no public comments on this, uh can I, we'd like to entertain a motion to close this public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing on local law to amend chapter one oh two, article four of the town code.
Can I have a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
We're a little slow, so.
And yes, that's okay.
Going out of order?
No, we're not.
No, it's not.
Um and then the next one is uh- Not what I meant. We're gonna have a local, I'd like to um have someone make a motion uh to open a public hearing on the local law to amend chapter sixty-five of the town code with regard to filming.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, Ed, do you wanna talk to us about this one?
I'm glad to, so um once again, an existing uh chapter of the town code that has long um had an exceptional backup. So um filming um at a at a residence is a permitted activity, but um it requires a permit from the town to make sure that there are no impacts on neighbors or neighborhoods. Um the code right now creates an exception for still photography. And what, as the town administrator, I think, explained at the last work session when we discussed this, history and recent history has shown that that exception um may not be uh advisable. That still photography uh can be uh impactful on neighbors and neighborhoods because it often involves uh 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 an entourage of crew and and support. There are parking and traffic issues, and we heard a resident at that work session explain um what his experience has been with that, with the neighbor. So this um amendment would remove uh that exception and so that a a resident who wanted to uh engage in that activity would have to apply for a permit. And the permits are uh limited, so uh there there are only seven, you can request a film permit seven times a year so that, you know, you can't turn your home into a movie studio. It's limited, so this is to bring still photography into the fold, into the world of requiring a permit.
Right, now, again, just we we discussed this at the work session, but this is not meant to pull anyone in, you wanna go take pictures of birds at Gedney Park, you will not be required to have a permit, correct? Can you explain just the difference so that people understand?
Uh yeah, I mean, it's a private photo photography like that, um you know, even uh you know, graduation, birthday party, that's not what this is getting at, this is a professional crew that comes in and uses your house or your property for a shoot.
Or public property too.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh anyone else have any questions?
I just have one question, which is not in the specific scope of the law we've been discussing, but um does the town actually earn any revenue when people do? No, okay.
Well, there's a small permit fee, but it's not a lot.
Just the permit fee, right.
Alright, any other town board questions?
Well, to Chris's question, I'm sorry, i- is it a flat fee, no matter what? Or is it depending on the days, what we're doing, where it is offhand, I-
I'd have to check the fee schedule, I can do that, I don't know where it is offhand, I-
I think it's um twelve or thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
And then there might be other charges for like, if they need police services and things like that, or if they need additional parking, things like that. So it depends on the specific filming project and the size of it.
And I think there are duration requirements on that, so if it's gonna last a month, you're gonna pay more than somebody who's gonna have a day.
Yes, they could, they could pay, have to pay that amount daily.
Yeah.
Twelve, twelve fifty or thirteen hundred daily.
Maybe we should just take a look at that in conjunction with what we're doing here, just to see if it's up to snuff.
But it's twelve to fifteen hundred a day, yeah, so.
That's that's something that's real money.
It is?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, we we saw a nice chunk when that uh film crew was here the other year at forty-eight H Cross.
They made rain too, didn't they?
They did.
Um alright, any other questions for Ed? Are we still talking about bodies, bodies, bodies?
Yeah.
Um any, anyone else on the town board have any comments?
No, I'm all set.
Alright, public comment?
If I may?
Sure, come.
Uh my name's Tom Kalish, I live at forty-eight Overlook Road, uh I guess it's Newcastle, well, it says Austin, but uh uh I'm the guy who lives next door that I I wanna make it clear, I'm I'm not looking at, you know, hurt anybody here. But these uh photo shoots are not, these are like Prada. You know, we're talking massive, you know, twenty trucks, two days, hundred, hundred people. So you know, there 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 is a sense of what is an overkill and what is a not overkill. And the, I was hoping uh uh the neighbor would be here because I think fairness is the way to deal with this, not just knock 'em out. Um you know, they had one photo shoot where there was a person in charge of taking care of the nonsense, it went great. But that was one out of fifteen, without that person there, it it's, you know, I have images I could give you, it's just overbearing and totally sets you off where you're where you're living. What I, my question for y'all is, uh the board, this is what the proposal is um to make photo shoots that are, you know, these types of photo shoots, same as filming, and there'll be seven of those per twelve months, which is pretty fair. I'm gonna just suggest to the board, they look a little deeper look and, you know, there there's big and there's not big, there's offensive and there's not offensive. And you know, I do know that this couple is later on, they don't have jobs. I'm not saying how good or bad they're doing, but I know they rely on that revenue, and I'm not looking to cut their feet out, it's just not what I'm here. I'm just here for a little mutual respect when this goes on. So uh for you guys, what's your, I don't know the process by how you do that, I heard this is now being, you brought it up, when do you vote on it? And do you give them a chance to talk?
So um my thought on this would be, given that there's another party involved, who might wanna speak, we'll definitely leave it open, at least for a week, uh for for comments, for written comments.
From them?
Yes.
Good, I want that.
And then um they can choose to comment or not. And then we would pro, most likely, depending on the results of that and how much we wanna discuss it further, we would either vote at our next meeting on this, our next public meeting.
I'm getting to like these things, so I'm gonna be here, yeah.
Oh, good, I'm so glad.
This was a good one, but I like being here.
We would discuss it at a a work session and then potentially vote on it at our next public meeting.
Okay, so again, I'm just gonna say for my comment, when you speak to the other party, you know, if there's some understanding of common decency of your neighbor, like, they don't live next to me, I live next, you know, they don't, you know what I'm saying, I'm there, they're not. So uh you know, it's these giant ones, they're the killer, I, you know, they have like three models and photographer and a couple of lights inside, it doesn't bother me at all. But that's just not been the case, and I, when you're doing this for a revenue, you're trying to get the biggest jobs you can, so you know, that's what I want you guys to consider when you speak to the other party. Again, I don't need you to tell them, I'm not looking to hurt them, but I'm letting you guys know that, you know, I don't wanna put anybody in a bad position. I just wanna live the way I anticipated living here and have lived till all this started happening.
Right?
Thank you.
Um correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, doesn't it say something in there that it's in a a manner that would disrupt your neighbors?
It is, there's another exception, um and that's for when it will not result in temporary adverse impacts,
light, noise, vibration, odor, so when it's of the scope, that does create those types of impacts, then you-
That's when they need the permit. So to your point, if it's, if it's, you know, two models and a camera inside the house, that's not gonna, unless they have fifty trucks following them, that's not really gonna necessarily be in a manner that would disrupt your neighbors, reasonably disrupt your neighbors, so they wouldn't need a permit for that.
To your point, there are very few uh for hire shoots like this that are that. Those are usually
Right.
amateurs that do that, not professionals, they don't want that business. The professionals go to the city, they hire edge trucks, catering trucks, you know, there are lights at nighttime when it gets dark. The, you know, the the unfortunate situation of this, it's the way our properties are lined up. You come down my driveway, there's an island, and then their driveway, I own the whole island. To get to their house, you have to drive by hundred twenty yards of this island. Those trucks go down, they can't back out, so here's what happens, when they leave, my island becomes the turnaround. And uh you know, as I've told you in the past, they've had to, they said, okay, we'll pay you ten grand to fix your lawn. I I don't wanna fix the lawn, I don't want it to happen.
Right.
So I don't know, you know, where the, I don't know where the watermark is on this from the, what I'm calling an amateur to a professional shoot. So you know, when you have that talk with the other party, you know, let let them, again, this is a discussion, not a, I don't wanna hammer anybody, just a discussion.
And it wouldn't just impact your property, it would impact it for the entire town, so.
But yeah, I get the brunt of it, yeah. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh any other comments on this, from anyone here? Yes, no?
I just have a question, you don't have to do the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I literally, this is just a question, I don't wanna fight with anybody.
Just say your name and yeah.
I'm Sir Vashemis, seven sixty-five King Street. Um is there anything in this thing that talks about like the number of trucks? I mean, wouldn't that be like a simple thing?
No, uh it's not quantitative like that, uh and I don't think it really could be, um.
Isn't that kind of the source of the the issue though for this gentleman?
Well, trucks are, but I'm not sure if you could reduce it to a number and and make it just a, you know, simple count of trucks and know if you're disturbing your neighbor.
Yeah. Is there a way that you could do like, like tiered permit structure maybe? You know what I mean, like, I I have some experience in this back, in this, so that's why I'm bringing it up, was like, could you tier it? So if the vehicles on site are, you know, fewer than five, then it's this, but if it's five plus, or if the tonnage of the vehicle is exceeding this, I don't wanna make it super complicated, but it just seems to me like, you know, the argument could be, well, there's no odor or whatever, but they're still tearing up the property.
Yeah, well, I I I'll tell you that when um someone comes in for an application, they have to provide a fair bit of disclosure. And if uh if the disclosure isn't adequate, questions will be asked. And you know, these types of questions will get um asked and answered, and you could have a parking plan, you could have different mitigations, we talked about. Um you know, you might need a police officer to to deal with, so all of those things get considered. It all depends on what we see on the application when it comes in.
Got it, okay, I was just, I was just more like asking, can you sort of tier the the permitting?
I mean, I I can say that I have a shared driveway too, and this has never happened to me, but if one truck blocked it, that would be a temporary adverse impact. So I don't think you could do a quantitative tiering, right? Or you know, one flatbed truck would would potentially create that, whereas three or four, you know, pickup trucks probably wouldn't. Um I'm not sure it'd be practical to do that.
And there also could be a situation where maybe there are no trucks, but there's significant lighting or sound that is gonna-
Well, it has to be there.
Generators.
Well, right, but I mean, it doesn't need to-
Generators.
Yeah, or generators, where it doesn't need, maybe the trucks are just dropping off and leaving, but there could be other things that are impacting neighbors, so.
Right, but that's the- Dropping off and leaving though is kind of a big deal, and when you're-
I don't mean to crosstalk, but that is the big deal, you know, the the van, the vans with the models are, you know, are con, they're all day during the shoot.
That's the big deal.
Right.
You know, three vans constantly rotating people, and I mean, if you're like-
No, no, not at all, it's your, it's, I I understand, 'cause I've run a lot of of photo shoots and video shoots and you have some vehicles that stay there all day, but then you have lots that come in and out. But the big ones are the problem actually, and they tend to do things like hit your walls and, you know. So I was just asking, like, I think I was asking, are there ways to make maybe different permits for different scopes or scales?
The problem with that is, it would depend on the size, where they could light the trucks, have the trucks stay, unfortunately, they have a long driveway with very short, you know, in front of their houses, very small space.
The turnaround's hard.
So you know, they would, what happens is, these trucks literally line the entire driveway. Then what happens at nighttime, it gets night, they need to seize, they put these giant spotlights out, which unfortunately, they have no choice but to aim at my house because they can't aim in at the shoot. And I know they're not doing it on purpose, that's what they have to do, but you know, it's, you know, I'm looking at my benefits, my non-benefits, I don't have any benefits in this situation.
Alright, well, I I just-
So Will, Will, it's a good point.
I'm just curious if if there was a way to sort of make the permit or make the languages a little bit-
You know, I think it's already in there.
Yeah, okay.
Because when the applicant coming, comes in, they have to present a use plan, they have to talk about sidewalks and and streets that are gonna be impacted, parking plans, um that all gets described in the application. And then the town administrator can actually add mitigations to the permit. So they'll require uh them to do different things depending on how, what the magnitude is. So I think that idea that it needs to be scaled, um it already is, and and so the mitigations address whatever, what what we're dealing with.
Okay, alright, awesome, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Uh any other public comment? Alright, anyone online? Okay, so I would suggest that we close the public hearing or leave it, or adjourn the public hearing, leave it open-
Or adjourn? If if you wanna leave it open to get that potential comment, and wanna adjourn it for a week?
For public comments for a week? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it, I mean, it drove, adjourn it for a week, next steps, just so I understand where I'm where I'm at.
So they have a week, they can bring us comments if they have, and then we'll we'll move forward from there.
Okay, so I'll see you at the next meeting, right?
Yes.
Have a good evening.
You too. Uh alright, so I think that is um- Uh alright, so I think that is um that's it for the meeting, right? We're just moving to resolutions? Right?
Alright, let's have the agenda.
Okay, um so does anyone wanna start with the resolutions?
Sure.
Alright.
Alright, uh I move to adopt the consent agenda as submitted consisting of the following as referenced below. Uh that's sufficient, correct, or do you want me to go for each and every one?
It's not necessary, you could just say as described in the agenda.
Uh as described in the agenda below.
How do you want a second?
My second?
Good work.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of six hundred thirty two thousand eight hundred forty four dollars twenty nine cents listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail report located October fourteenth of this glorious year. Checks will be printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's moving in next?
Oh sure, okay, I move to authorize the promotion of John Markowitz the third from laborer zero four two five dash oh five within the parks department to motor equipment operator, um zero four two seven dash oh two within the the department of public works at the annual salary of seventy thousand five hundred and thirty one dollars and forty five cents. Uh this is group seven, step three, effective November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I moved authorize the hiring of Kevin McCarville for the position of recreation attendant, zero two seven five dash oh five within the recreation and parks department at the rates described below in the agenda, effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh I moved authorize the hiring of Dominic Matthews for the position of recreation attendant, zero two seven five dash oh five within the recreation and parks department at the rates described in the agenda, effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Authorization to increase pay rate parks. I move to authorize the pay rate increase of Bosco Castillo seasonal laborer, zero four two five dash zero five within the recreation and parks department from fifteen dollars per hour to sixteen dollars per hour, effective October twenty four, two thousand twenty two.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh authorization to hire a part-time court attendant. I move to authorize the hiring of Kenneth McGrath, position of part-time court attendant, zero zero five one dash zero two within the police department at the hourly rate of thirty five dollars per hour, effective retroactively to September fifteen, two thousand twenty two.
My second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorization to appoint Holocaust and Human Rights Committee. I move to authorize the appointment of Robin Keels and Joshua Lungan as student members of the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee for the term of one year, effective retroactively to September sixth, two thousand twenty two.
My second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um.
That's it?
Do we have an email resolution, I think?
There was an email resolution. There was.
The guest house.
Oh, the guest house.
Yes, we have a resolution.
Yeah, they emailed it to us. It's a long one.
Alright, who wants it?
Ally?
An issue.
No, don't know this.
No, 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 no.
Trial by fire.
You're hazing going on.
This might be one you can vote on, actually.
Alright, so um we can just start off from the beginning, uh um I move to adopt the following resolution, whereas the town board has issued various approvals to permit residential and retail development in Chapel Hill Crossing, including but not limited to approval for a multifamily planned development district, MFPD, on the eastern portion of the site known as the East Village, as shown in a preliminary development concept plan, PDCP. Um there are multiple whereas clauses here uh uh moving forward. Um now therefore be resolved that the town board hereby declares its intent to reestablish itself as lead agency with respect to the guest house application and directs the planning department to circulate notice of the same and all relevant documentation to all involved and interested agencies. And be it further resolved that the town board refers to guest house application to the Westchester County Planning Board pursuant to general municipal law two three nine dash M and Westchester County Administrative Code. Be it further resolved that the town board schedules a public hearing on the guest house application which seeks approval for the replacement of the guest house with a new structural design, pardon me, new structure designed to replicate its architectural and historical qualities and serve as a clubhouse for new residents of the East Village for Tuesday, November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two at the town of Newcastle Town Hall, seven thirty P M, or soon or as soon thereafter, as reached on the agenda that evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, um is that it?
Adjourn?
That's it.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everybody. And welcome, Ally.
Thank you.
Alright.
Sure.
Ally, you think you had a better criminal court? Welcome.
So this is Ed or?